Anyone call we need to order? If you could, please stand for the pledge of allegiance and salute to the state flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of this land, our nation, and our people. We are in this law with the same justice for all. As the leader of the state of New Mexico, let's see a symbol of our true faith.
Okay. So, next item on the agenda is approval of a special meeting, uh, meeting agenda.
So, my, second.
Okay.
Sorry. A good reminder, thank you.
So, we have a motion and any discussion? All those in favor? All right, aye. Motion carries. Next part of the agenda is the public input. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question and answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any individual would like to discuss an item in more depth, depth may request to be placed on future agenda. Request forms are available in the county manager's office. Anyone for a public input? Go ahead, sir. No one? All right, we'll move on to the next item. Budget hearing, uh, discussion regarding the Grand County budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Thor. In front of you, you have the preliminary budget for fiscal year, um, 2020. And, um, we've been over this budget several times. We highlighted all the, um, increases to the budget. We've had all the departments come in and, um, speak to present their budgets. And, um, we'd like to recommend that, um, this budget be approved as presented, which would, um, give us a surplus amount, a projected surplus amount for the end of the fiscal year of forty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars. Um, this would be in the general fund. And, um, the budgeted revenues in the general fund would be thirteen million, four hundred fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars. And expenditures of ten million, eight hundred seventy-one thousand, five hundred and ninety. I did leave in this budget, um, the, um, step time for the sheriff's office. And, um, all the other requests as were submitted. Um, the only change that I made from the hearing was the twenty-five thousand dollar increase in revenue for the special elections and the eight thousand dollars to the Baird Library. And, um, the-
What did you say about the special election funding?
The twenty-five thousand dollars in revenue.
It's, it's still in there.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I added to it because it wasn't in there when we had the budget hearing.
We had an expense side of that.
Oh, you added the revenue?
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, and, um, I don't know, do you have any other questions for me that you would like for me to go over, um, in addition to what we've discussed?
Is that under clerk's fees?
It's under, um, election reimbursement.
Oh, I see. Forty-two fifty-one.
Forty-two fifty-one, yes.
Thanks for doing that. So, presumably there was a seventeen thousand dollars excess. When you take that twenty-five in new revenue and subtract the eight in new spending.
Um, yeah, um, but you have to also take into consideration the three twelfths of the eight thousand dollars from the Baird Library.
Did you say the three twelfths?
Required reasons.
The required reasons.
To change your budget here.
Right. So, three twelfths of the twenty-five thousand?
No, um-
How much does that affect the three twelfths of the expenditure?
Three twelfths of the entire expenditure, which on the entire expenditure, I added eight thousand dollars for the Baird Library.
Okay.
So, three twelfths of the eight thousand.
Two thousand.
Yeah.
So, the rest just went into the excess at the end of the year?
Yes.
All right, I expressed at the last meeting my interest in putting the rest of that, not counting the additional three twelfths we have to reserve, you know, into the other libraries. They're all used by counting residents. So, I'm glad to see that we've got Baird in here. In my hope that we could do a similar amount for Silver and maybe half that amount for Hila. That would be twenty thousand. That would be five thousand to make the three twelfths.
You're talking about Baird, Hila, and Silver?
Yeah, those are the three libraries.
Okay, we can-
Now, I've got no, you know, remaining concerns. I think we've discussed this quite a bit.
Okay, and what I can do is, um, I'll look into possibly funding that on our final budget.
I, I have a question sort of related to that. So, right now, we know the sheriff's department didn't use their full budget and I don't think the detention department used their full budget. So, if there was, you know, there's going to be funds left from, just say, the sheriff's department, can we make a one-time donation to, uh, the library?
I don't know, you're still, you're talking, excuse me, you're talking about our current budget?
Well, say we get, we get to the, your end of the year.
Mm-hmm.
And at the end of the year, you say, okay, well, we have X amount of dollars left over in this department. Can we take some of that money and make a one-time donation equal to whatever we, we discussed to the, the libraries or whatever else that we want?
Um, yes, we could do that, but it's all, it's going to be dependent on what our ending cash balance is. Because when we have that ending cash balance, we use those funds also to, um, budget all the other, um, operating expenses of the entire county. Because we don't bring in enough revenue to cover our expenses at one hundred percent. So, we always have to use our cash balance.
Okay, well, let me bring up another question. So, and again, just, just for the sake of, of, of discussion, say we have three hundred thousand dollars left because there was deputies that weren't hired and that was budgeted, that's in there. So, if he had hired all the deputies, that money wouldn't be in there. So, if we're rolling that money over and say next year, he has a full contingency and there's not that money left, it's still going to come from somewhere, right? So, I don't understand us not being able to use the money left over from any department.
So, so, you're not, go ahead and take a shot. Here's my understanding of how that will end up working. Uh, come the end of June, we'll be able to figure out what that number is. And when we approve, uh, the budget, sort of the final, final, uh, which happens when?
I don't know.
At that point, we'll know how much we're carrying over for the FY twenty budget, right? And it's out of that carryover that we can essentially allocate funds. Do you have other things?
Okay, but what I don't understand is that if we're putting all expenses and that's taking, eating up part of what we save in salaries.
The carryover, yeah.
Well, what happens next year if there's a full contingency with the sheriff's department and there's no carryover from his budget? Where will the money that we need come from? See, so if we're, if we're dependent right now on carryover from, well, I know that the sheriff's department and the detention center don't have their full contingency. And if we're dependent on that and to pay what we're, we're going to be owing at the end of the year, what's going to happen next year if they have full contingency?
According to this budget, we're not dependent on that. Right, according to this budget, we could afford to spend all of that money and not have to cut anywhere else. The difference is we won't be adding to our carryover the following year. At least as long as I've been on, when we've saved money, when we were talking about, we've added to our, our reserves.
Okay, but what I'm hearing is that if we had savings of three hundred thousand, we're not going to really have savings of three hundred thousand because we're going to use part of that money to pay whatever deficits we have at the end of the year. And now, am I, am I wrong?
No, you're, you're correct. I think what I'm understanding is that you, in your mind, thinking we have these additional three hundred thousand dollars available.
Yeah.
Which we really won't because in the next fiscal year, it's part of the carryover and then there's additional expenses within that fiscal year that we need to be able to, um, pay for, which is coming in from the carryover money.
So, if we had, if it did full contingency this year, where would the extra money to pay for, for any of our deficits come from this year?
Um, it was already budgeted, so there wouldn't be a deficit because it's budgeted every year. It's kind of like everything goes back to zero at the end of the fiscal year and you start all over again. So, there's never a deficit at the end of the year. If there would have been a full contingency at the sheriff's office this year, we would have been fine. Our, just our carryover, our rollover on the carryover wouldn't be as high as it-
Exactly, that's what, that's what I'm talking about. So, we had, we've been used, we've expended all his funds.
We would have a less of a carryover for the next year. And then we would be looking at the budget and saying, okay, we cannot fund, I don't know, scrap monies, libraries, whatever. Then we would be looking at it and be saying, we can't do that because we don't have enough funds available.
Okay, so in your final budget report to us at the end of the year, you're going to tell us how much we have carryover from, from whatever it comes from, every department?
From every department, okay, yes.
Uh-huh. Just a little bit, just a little bit.
So, um, I would actually like to, at some point, have more discussion about the library thing and, uh, the, um, expense and, um, revenues from, uh, the clerk's office on, on the fees for special elections, that sort of thing. But, um, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me to have, um, all of that conversation until after the end of June when we know what all of these carryovers, et cetera, are. So, um, so my understanding of this right now, this budget has money in it for the Baird Library, but not the other two.
Correct.
At this moment. And it has what, what the sheriff's office is proposing.
Yes.
If we want to change what, uh, if, if we decide, for example, that we're going to use the, um, revenue from the special election thing, we're going to reduce that actually in anticipation of the sixteen thousand dollar fee for service from Silver School District. We're going to reduce that by that, say to ten thousand.
Sixteen is a guess, right? We don't want to go-
Yes, right, okay. The guess, have we reduced, we reduce that twenty-five thousand by that much, put that into libraries? We can discuss that in my own, correct?
Correct.
And anything else that we want to do?
That is correct. We, um, what we need to do is submit a preliminary budget to Santa Fe by Thursday. Um, but yes, everything to change, um, or whatever's in this budget.
And our carryovers and-
Uh, because the carryovers, revenues can change. They can come in higher or lower than is, um, projected on this budget. Um, expenses could also, um, be reduced or increased depending on that, um, balance that we have at the end of the fiscal year.
So, Mr. Chair, I'd actually like to make a motion that we approve resolution number RN two thirty-five fiscal year, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, put there in session.
I have a few more questions, but I can screen this question. Uh, is our motion on the floor? A second. Second motion, no, we can't discuss it.
That would be-
Yeah, I've been given a turn, we would be, sorry. Um, so, my understanding of, of what we have in front of us, the preliminary budget and then reading the resolution, which is preliminary proposed, so I feel good about that. I don't have a problem with that. But, couple of questions, and I had asked for this, I believe, what month are we in May? I believe either in the May meeting for the ending, uh, the sheriff saving, how much money we save by not hiring these deputies? Do you have those figures?
I do not. I haven't been able to work on that, no. But I can get that to you.
Yeah, if you can get those, just to see what the, the savings was because of the benefits, the insurance, PRA insurance, salaries on that. Um, the other question I had was when do we anticipate, have we the final numbers for the ending cash balance?
Well, that'll probably be like, um, the first week of July. But I wouldn't actually have a budget available for you till probably the last week of July because I need to close out, do the quarterly for-
Right.
Santa Fe and all that, but-
No, and I understand the process too, but, and I'm not talking maybe the budget, but maybe we could get the commissioners of just a figure, dollar amount of, of not only the savings from the sheriff's department, not hiring, and then maybe just a number of the ending cash balance.
Okay.
And, and we can do that. Uh, my other part of this discussion is, you know, again, and I don't want to repeat myself a little bit here, but I don't, to me, our biggest thing, and I'm glad this is preliminary, is we really need to focus on, on our own employees and see where they're at on wages and, and that's, you know, like to revisit that. Um, we really would like to, uh, look at what we have, what we don't for some of the things that we have out there, uh, what we have as far as, uh, uh, you know, our projects or, or things that we haven't. And, and like, I don't want to say neglect, but you know, because of funding and because of probably manpower and because of certain things that do affect any, any government body, uh, look at that to see what we can do to start helping with those areas. But that's part of my discussion right now, since it's preliminary.
Well, to go along with that, that's why I was so interested in any, any savings because I would really try, like to see what we can save to be able to give a three and four percent raise to all, uh, our employees. You know, because if you look at their wages, some of them are pretty low.
So, one of the things I think is, is really important to keep in mind around, across the board raises is that every time we give a raise, it increases the disparity between employees. Um, so, you know, um, a person who makes, uh, ten thousand dollars a year, I'm just using this as an example, versus a person who makes twenty thousand dollars a year, a percentage raise across the board gives the person making twenty thousand dollars a year a higher raise to the person that's making ten. So, I think there are some, I, I think there's a lot of room for discussion about how we can make the pay in the county more equitable and more in line with our step plan without doing the cross-the-board raise. And, uh, my hope is that we will have more discussion about that in July. Um, and, uh, I would like to see us actually, um, potentially dedicate the July meeting to the budget, the, the second meeting in July to budget so that we don't have other, because there's a lot of big things that we need to discuss. So, I just, and then the other thing I wanted to say is that we have to keep in mind that once we give raises, we have to have the income every year to do that. And I think your point is well taken is if we have the savings this year but not next year, then how do we pay for it? And I think we have to keep that in mind when we're talking about, um, uh, reoccurring expenses is that once we incur it, then we have to have the money to pay for it every year going forward.
Yeah, I think, I think too, if, and I, I mean, that, those are my, you know, what I would like to see, and I'm not saying across the board as far as I'm concerned, but we need to look at that. I think if we're going to, if, but if we do take the approach of, you know, we can't or we don't have the money, I think it needs to go across the board. It just can't be, you know, it needs to stay flat and it needs to stay across the board. I don't want to go into, say, in August and start, well, so-so got a raise or so-and-so got a raise. No, it needs to stay zero or it needs to go for, you know, our own employees. Now, my biggest thing to this is our elected officials are elected by citizens of Grand County. They put their trust, their faith in them for their services, you know? And, and what does it cost for the assessors, the treasurers, the clerk's office, you know, the sheriff's department? We already see that when we continue to lose people, what's the dollar amount that it takes to retrain these people? And, and I think you bring up a very good point and I, I would love your ideas, Rick, to sit down in July and, and on that second meeting and, and let's look at our ending cash balance. Let's look at what we've lost. Let's look at what we are doing and, and let's see what we could do for, for, you know, the employees under the department heads, the employees under our elected officials, and go from there because, you know, we're already working on more pieces, the sheriff's department, what other pieces do we need to work on?
And, and, and I mean with you, Alicia, is that, and maybe it would be better to say, you know, it's going to be a dollar an hour raise or whatever. And I think we need to look at, at different avenues of doing this. But I also know that Linda's going to meet probably till the third week in, uh, in July to, to get the budget ready. So, we either call a special meeting or we, uh, delay our meeting to the last week in July so that we can address and, and get the budget done.
And I think we have to select somebody to do that however we want to do.
Yeah. The other part that I think too is any additions to headcount? I'm not saying vacancies, but additions to headcount and even maybe quarterly reports on the budget, you know, every three weeks to look at where we're at because it's, it's very important.
Of course, we get that, of course.
Okay, good. And that is just the headcounts, but, um, you know, this is very important and this is why we were elected also to make sure that we do what's, what's the best work for our citizens and for the county employees to do. So, that's what I-
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, early in July, um, I intend to devote some time to looking at, um, how do we implement something maybe similar to what we're doing at the sheriff's department countywide, how to better utilize these, uh, power plant we have in place, uh, and idea of what we're working with after we close the fiscal year. So, I intend to have something for you to look at moving forward to address all of the concerns. I've heard you all very loud and clear, um, as well as the elected officials of department heads regarding, um, pay disparities. So, I intend to focus a considerable amount of time looking at, um, what's the possible options maybe that it will be till early July.
I think this is where we need to fly, hopefully till early July.
I am actively trying to complete CDPG application for funding to, um, address ADA compliance issues at the town park. It's a pretty, um, in-depth, um, application. I'll also be, um, at, um, next Grand County's conference for basically a week in June. I have to have the application done at Empressville County by the fourteenth before I leave, no, seventeenth before I leave. Um, so I'm working diligently on that. So, basically, the rest of the month of June is, um, pretty much allocated to, to that. So, that's one of the reasons for the delay I'm, I'm looking at, and I better have the, uh, fiscal year closed, so I know what I'm working on.
Anyone further in this discussion?
Not to blame or anything, but I guess, um, in my absence, I missed how the Baird Library got funded and not the other libraries. Could someone explain that to me?
I think it was, what, what brought it to light to me was that there was a request and I got an email on that. That was a piece of the Baird project, I mean, not the Baird Library, but you're right, it was probably an oversight on, on, on my part.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, we usually receive our request from the Baird Library every year. Sometimes it's a little delayed, as it was this year. Um, sometimes we get it early on when we're working on preliminary budget. This time it was a little late. So, that request was, um, received like the afternoon before we presented the preliminary budget. So, we did add that. We typically don't receive requests from the Silver City Library or the Hila Library. I can't speak to why, um, and so you've not funded that. I will note that we are the fiscal agent for the Hila Library, so we know all of their, um, grants that they, that they do get. But that's the reason why, since I've been here, that's not mentioned and we've only addressed the request from the Baird Library and we're not receiving requests from the others.
So, I, I think we've made it abundantly clear that our intention is to give money to all three county libraries, all three libraries in the county. Are we in agreement on that?
No, certainly, but I was like, what's-
So, maybe, um, maybe what we really ought to do, I'm going to amend my motion, um, because we need to have the discussion about the libraries, all, all three of them at the same time, once we know what, uh, what we have, um, for the final budget numbers. And so, I'm going to amend my budget, my, uh, motion to actually take out the Baird Library out of this preliminary budget, um, with the caveat that we will discuss those libraries in the final budget. I don't think it's probably fair to put Baird in there and not put the other libraries at this point.
Okay.
Commissioner, perfect, second. Commissioner Billings, the second, are you?
Yeah.
To me, it makes no difference actually whether we leave it in or take it out. We'll have a chance to rectify the problem if we leave it in.
So, what if we decide that we want to, to make it less than eight thousand? What if we want to give more five?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, for the sake of preliminary budget and for the sake of work that Linda has to convince them on a working permit between now and when she has to have this submitted, it would be much easier on her if we just let her go apart. I just need to-
As long as we all have an understanding about the situation. Commissioner Billings, you?
Well, yeah, I think, I think it warrants further discussion on for leaving it as it is with the understanding that-
And I think we need to make it clear that, I also think that we need to make it clear that, um, in the final, uh, discussion, the Baird Library may not get any cash dollars. That's the thing, that's the reason why I said that I would amend my motion. I will not.
And I have further questions about how the Silver City Library gets funded being in town, but all that will be for future discussions.
Well, and, and I think that was a point of concern, you know? The only, I mean, preliminary proposed is the only thing getting me to say, okay, we're going, you know, are getting me to vote, uh, yes on this because of those words in there. And I think there is a lot of discussion, agreeable to Commissioner Edwards and Eliot because we're going to need to take another look at this. So, I'm good with that. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'm good.
All those in favor? Aye. I motion carries. So, just move on from A to B. All right. So, Commissioners report, uh, Commissioner Slavatov, your report.
At this time, I just want, uh, to put out there that it's really my intent to see some things on the budget, you know, as, as the libraries, as, uh, as compensation for our employees. Okay, and I want to see those really go through and, and do whatever we, we have to. But I also realize, you know, what our, our fixed budgets are. Okay? So, I'm, I'm good. And, and, um, the one question I would say is when do we know the results for the CDPG? Now, because, now, when do we have to have our, um, capital outlay?
Capital outlay we present in December. That is correct.
Okay, so I'm, I'm, thank you.
It goes to the state in September, so we would, um, that ICIP, there's a September deadline, right? So, we would know about CDPG before we, before the ICIP files come out.
Right, so the ICIP is just a plan. I assume he was talking about capital outlay that goes to the legislature and we make those requests, which is two separate processes.
Okay.
So, we don't make the capital outlay request till, um, till December, early December. Um, but you would know whether or not we're successful with CDPG funding long before we make those capital outlay requests.
So, we can reprioritize the ICIP, but based on the results of the CDPG grant? That's really what I was asking.
Yes, that's what I was asking.
I think we keep telling you, I, I mean, we need to, like, to demand that capital outlay.
I mean, town and ICIP at any point in time, even if you chose to do it earlier on after you've submitted your capital outlay. That's correct.
Commissioner, you have a second?
Yes.
Commissioner, I have a second. No, I have a question.
No, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Edward, you?
I'm good, thanks.
Commissioner.
Uh, yeah, I wanted to show you some more work. I apologize. Um, I think probably most of us are aware that, uh, there's been something that I would call humanitarian crisis that is now sort of related to them, to the decision by immigration and customs enforcement to- So we related to them, to the decision by immigration and customs enforcement to bring immigrants who are seeking asylum to Delhi. And first, they were leaving them at the bus stop. I don't know if you all have taken that bus, I only get one, fortunately. But it's a very small cinder block building in a parking lot of a gas station convenience store. And having hundreds of people there was completely untenable. So Delhi stepped up, and the county stepped up, the fairgrounds available. Last week, I went down to see how I could help out. My wife did, actually, there were six of us from Silver City. We didn't know each other was going down, but we found each other when we were down there. So there's a lot of volunteer help going on. But I also saw that Delhi has allocated a million dollars for this effort. I believe their firefighters are helping out a lot, and I don't know what else the money's intended to go for. I called Commissioner Sweetser, paying him to office when we came into office, the three of us. So I had a chance to meet him way back when, and we've talked a few times, just as good neighbors, you know, if there's something we can really do, help Luna County. I don't know if there's a need. The volunteer organization down there is going really well. I'm impressed as heck by the volunteers. But when I see the city council passing a million dollars out of what can't be a very large budget, that makes me feel like, you know, we need to step up as neighbors and maybe help out. And that's completely independent of anybody's views on the causes of the immigration crisis. It's strictly as a matter of being good neighbors. And Mr. Sweetser recommended that we contact Mr. Bryce with the county and see if we can get help, but it looks like maybe we've done that already.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I have a conversation with Erin Serna, the city manager of the city of Denny. He's approached me regarding assistance for transportation from the fairgrounds to bus stations of the airport. We're working on that, and I will hopefully, the county's supposed to have something to me by this week so I can get that back to Erin. Our emergency manager, River Elton, has been down there several times. He's helped organize volunteer efforts from Grant County, a church in Ula. Their pastor offered up their bus to drive, those sort of things. So he's reached out to some organizations within the county to try and help out in that matter that we will be looking at. I've been requested to provide some sort of assistance with transportation, and that's what we're looking at.
That is fabulous. That's great. And transportation was a big issue when I was there, so I really appreciate that.
Can you keep us posted on, I'm allowed to email or whatever, maybe?
Thank you.
It's open. Okay. Under my report, I guess, just want to make sure that, you know, and down the road, probably a little bit from here, but just real brief, as far as the town park, just want people in Grant County to know that we are working on it, and I take my hats off to the county manager for the grant. And we're looking at that, so we are working on it, and hopefully we can have something figured out and directions we'll be taking with that. So it is not falling on deaf ears, and it is being worked on, and hopefully we can hear a little more information down the road on that. And that's.
Mr. Chair, I would like to go into the executive session. The county manager, the guard down the church, we're going to say nineteen seventy or ten dash two dash four.
I'll second that. Second by Commissioner Billings, discussion, and I will go.
Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Billings, Salas, are you aware that you will be in the executive session?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, yes, still under the exec, or we're going to go on to the next item on the agenda is any action necessary as a result of closed executive session?
Like the jury or something?
Do, make a motion, do come out of it. Okay.
I make a motion to come out of the executive session.
Second by Commissioner Brown, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Okay, moving on to the next item is any action necessary as a result of the closed executive session? I would like to make a motion that we accept Abigail Robin Burgess', resignation effective July 15, 2019.
I'll second that.
And we have a second by Commissioner Billings, any discussion? No discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Aye. I motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to discuss what we do now as a result of this resignation, whether we want to look for a replacement county attorney or maybe go with a contract attorney?
Okay.
I don't know, you know, I think there's a lot to go into that decision, but my inclination as of right now is to go with a contract attorney. I understand many other counties use that system successfully. I feel like it's been a luxury for us to have a staff attorney. I feel like when we compare costs, we have to remember to include the benefits that go with having a staff attorney. So it's not just salary, you know, it's another, probably another thirty percent on top of salary or more, because we're very generous with our benefits programs. So that's sort of my inclination right now, is to go with a contract.
Mr. Chair, so I would have a question about, does a contract attorney provide their own administrative support? Okay. So if there are documents to prepare on behalf of the county, et cetera, et cetera, that would be covered in their contract, their responsibility to cover that sort of thing?
So this shape in your head is yes.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I can only speak from my experience and previous contracts I've had with a contract attorney, and yes, they provide all the administrative supports they need. We're not responsible for any documents that you prepare or.
Was that in Roosevelt County?
And is there, are there things that, I agree with Commissioner Brown that it's been a luxury for us to have a staff attorney? And I'm wondering if there are things that, services that we get from a staff attorney that we would not get from a contract attorney that would potentially be coverable by other county staff?
It's important. And to piggyback on Commissioner Edwards, if there's work that our county attorney is doing that is going to be, is going to have to be absorbed by somebody else, you know, any kind of record keeping or whatever that she's doing, that wouldn't be taken to a contract attorney that would need to be absorbed by another person?
I believe there are perhaps some things that she is doing that would need to be absorbed by county staff. Some things that jump out to me initially as special record requests, departments, some of their stuff. She handles those requests for several departments. Most of those you can see training from the AG's office on that. So that's the first thing that comes to mind that would be absorbed within the records office. If it's something significant tied to court claims of that nature, then obviously, yes, we would reach out to the attorney to look at. That's typically what I've done in the past, is I have those requests, redact what I think is appropriate based on my interpretation of the law, then present that to the attorney, and they do what they need to do. Some are to, you know, the clerks use Abby Soto for advice. There's different avenues we can use to absorb some of the things that she has been doing. At this point, I cannot say specifically what that would be or how much extra work would be put on the staff, but that would be so.
But as a county attorney, she doesn't just work for the commission, correct? She works for the assessor, treasurer, and so she works for other elected officials. And so those offices would then be responsible for their own requests?
Typically, now they are. And I know that Mr. South's handle is mostly theirs unless it's something related to a court claim or, you know, money sounds hers. I believe the treasurer does on simple, very basic, this is how the administration provides cases. We do consult her for other. But she does our, if ever class, she does DWI, she does planning, some other things. There are some things that she's been involved in, in the planning department prior to me coming on board, that I think she can absorb more. You go back to staff receiving, watching, but I really can't pinpoint what that is at this point in time. So I really, and I would rather say I have some questions on the projects.
But we could, if we decided to go with a contract attorney, we could do a one-year contract, and then we'd visit whether it's really what we want to do, right?
It's my understanding that there may be even another option with contract attorney, and that is something preliminary before a full contract is entered into. That was presented to me, so maybe.
So I have an idea, contract, get to know your contract?
I was just told that firms would step in during the interim before the contract to give, yeah, and give you a feel for what.
Right.
And then you might go with them. So I, with Commissioner Brown, prefer the idea of pursuing a contract attorney. I think we could task the county manager with that, with looking into those options with using New Mexico counties and whatever other avenues she has, asking those, you know, the questions that we have, and then.
Yeah, and I think we're fortunate that our attorney gave us enough notice that we can do that smoothly. So I appreciate her planning ahead. That was very gracious of her. You know, I have an additional question about the contracting, how this is going to work, and maybe you can tell us from Roosevelt County, or maybe you can come back to us. You know, I've certainly gotten in the habit of knocking on Abby's door and asking her a question. I expect that could get expensive with a contract attorney, and I wonder how we control ourselves, basically, right? How do we decide what's an appropriate question and who's authorized to ask it?
It's probably going to take a while, because, I mean, exactly what you said, you know, I'm in the habit of knocking on her door and asking questions. You know, I'm not opposed against a contract attorney. The only thing that what sort of in my head right now is, if we go a contract attorney, it's going to be the hours after the contract. And then it sounds like, okay, well, we may need additional person to take on some of these tasks. So at the end, are we going to be way above what we have, you know, what we pay on a salary for an in-house attorney? So those are the things that I think we need to look at, and I know, and, you know, I understand the timeframe here, and yeah, I appreciate she gave us the time she did, but, and I understand our county manager is really busy, but I think our direction ought to be is to, you know, look at both options, look at what it's going to entail, what a contract's going to cost us if we do get into a legal line, how much more we're going to pay, are we going to be paying hundreds of thousands of dollars now if we bring in somebody with benefits? Because I don't want it to, you know, we're all talking about cost savings with a contract attorney, but at the end, it may not be.
There needs further that to Commissioner Brown and to Chairman here. Most attorneys are contract, you get retained questions. So if you've got a contract attorney that has good expertise, you can call them and ask them questions, which they will tell you out of their current knowledge. You know, when you start getting charged, it involves research. So if it's just advice over the phone, you know, which that's most what we ask Abby, you know, but if it involves research, then they start charging, getting into that. So it would be hopeless to get a county, an attorney, even a contract attorney, that is very knowledgeable.
So I would like to remind you that when you hire professional services, for care code is a quality assessment based R and P, so you would be selecting based upon the best qualified, knowledgeable, equitable work. And price is a secondary factor that we look at.
And I just want, and I just want comment is at the end, I don't want, you know, the budget to go through the roof when you have a contract attorney plus that personnel to take some of these other tasks to, where we're sitting here struggling with the budget already as we are. I mean, we heard all the comments, and we come, well, we don't have money for this. And then to add on top of that, you know, I think, I think the direction should be is look at that option, and then when that comes up, as far as a contract attorney, look at the options, what we're going to benefit from it, what maybe an approximate cost, and then maybe look at the other side down the road.
I agree completely. I think, you know, going cautiously is the way to go so we can see how it works. I guess I want to say a couple of things. One is, we don't know if we have a staff attorney, whether we're going to have to hire a contract attorney in addition, right? Some years, we've had to do that. So you can't compare it to a fixed cost that you know, because sometimes even that goes through the roof, right?
Well, the fact that at this very time, we're contracting all this stuff out, we have.
Right. So that happens anyway. So just like, as you said, we might have to hire more staff to handle some of the routine things, and that would increase the cost of going without a staff attorney. It's also the case that if we go without a staff attorney, we might, I mean, if we go with a staff attorney, we might actually have to contract out still. And the second thing I was going to say, this, in my experience, which is all from the school where I work, the legal line item is the most difficult thing to budget of all, because some years, it's like two hundred dollars, we don't need anything. In some years, it has been six figures, well, five figures. Yeah, it's a lot, right? So it just depends on what happens that year. And so even if we do go cautiously, we have to remind ourselves, we're not getting really a long-term study, we're just getting a taste, you know, as it goes. We might never actually know the answer. We might just have to intuit the answer. And lastly, to Commissioner Salas's point, when I call up our lawyer from the school, I hope it's a question she knows the answer to, and she often does because she's extremely knowledgeable, but I still get point one hour on the bill for that phone call. So I think it's rare that they'll answer a question and not bill you at all.
Well, I, it's in the negotiations, because when I did ours, we negotiated, and it was a certain amount, I paid a thousand dollars for all the retained questions.
Oh, okay. So that's a slightly different arrangement.
So, you know, I think that's just into the negotiations of the contract.
So I have a clarifying question. I heard you say absorb duties into existing staff. And I do agree that it's pertinent for us to talk about whether there would have to be additional staff, but can you just give us a feel for whether you think additional staff is necessary at this point, or are you fairly confident at this point that we can absorb whatever we need to absorb?
Not knowing exactly what all those piles are on her desk, I can't accurately answer that, but I will tell you, we will do our very best to absorb anything that is non-legal work and the offices that.
Did you hear that, Bernadette?
See, I was trying to do what it feels bad with, and you know.
Bernadette's funny.
No, she was sitting there smiling, shaking her hands. Yeah, what she did.
Yeah.
Well, right, but I, because I get more with, I don't go into each department and ask there if there's staff for much, it's always dealing with Bernadette, but, you know, I guess probably the direction we can, and I don't know how you guys feel, just look at what that is, and then once you get a clear view of having that meeting or sitting down with that, and seeing what's all there, then I guess we. down with Abby and seeing what's all there, then I guess we can further go along with this.
How, you know, like Commissioner Brown said earlier, let me add some more work to your piles and piles, but really, this is a question, and how long would it take for you to come up with a, a pros and cons of, you know, of staff versus contract, and I'm not asking for something really in depth, but, you know, do we know, do we know what Robert Scaram charges the town, do we know what the attorney, Sikora charges, do we know what Denny's paying, you know, is that something that we could have, like a little pros and cons sheet of each, we know what a staff attorney costs approximately?
You know, I think it, and my experience is very similar to what Harry described, it's kind of a pinpoint, I mean, you know, there's, there's years that you, you know, staff attorney that you, you use a lot of outside counsel, there are times that you have a contact attorney that they, you know, your bill may be minimal, there, it depends on what is going on with the agency.
But there is a fixed cost.
Now to do, when that's going to be an RFP, I can't tell you what the fixed cost is going to be, because I don't know who's going to do it, and if anyone is even interested in it, it might not be anybody who wants to do it.
Well, but we know what other, other counties have been doing.
I, I can try my time to do that, but my, my plate's pretty full right now, to come up with pros and cons right now, in a timely fashion, to be able to move forward, so this doesn't cause us to be even further behind, and to continue to pay someone else who's going to charge us on all the other, to be an interim attorney.
Can your staff absorb that? For the cons?
See, that's what I'm saying, that's my point, is, is you guys are so busy right now, eventually, we may have to visit this again, and I'm trying to avoid that.
I can ask Kevin about that, but we're at the mercy of Solomon answering her email, and right now, it's a busy time for every city and every municipality, it's budget time, and if they're writing, they shove that email to the back, I'll get to it, we're at the mercy of, do they want to give us their contract, do they have time to do that? So, we, we will put that response out there, I did ask for some, I think, two contracts back, just to look at, just anticipation of this conversation, we don't always get information in a timely fashion when we ask for it, we will ask for off the contract, from local, or from municipal counties, as well as those, um, specified.
So these would be to compare to proposals we receive?
No, I was thinking about...
The staff versus contract?
Right.
Option?
Yep.
Okay, so I'm trying to think about the timing, it strikes me, if we get something published, even if we get it published by the end of this week...
Right, it's very tight.
That, you know, giving thirty days means it's the end of, end of June, and we would have two weeks, so, I'm, I'm actually not feeling like we're going to learn more before making this decision, I don't think it's going to work, that we're going to learn more, I feel like we need to make a decision, and think of that decision as tentative, right? It's as we were talking about, we get another contract attorney, and we'll get more information as we go, and we can change our mind with a contractor in a way that we can't with a staff member.
And we can jump up to December.
Something like that, that's, I would like to see us do that.
And see where we go, and if we have no, yeah.
I mean, it's always great to have more information, I just don't think it's going to, it's going to work in a way that's effective for us, because there's such variability in this issue.
So I think the, the direction for the county manager would be, unless, Ms. Speaker, please, let me, while you get, well, you know, but, I think the direction would be right now to just have the county manager look at a contract attorney.
That, that's my interest.
And mine would be sort of to follow Commissioner Billings here, is there somebody out there that would do a, like a contingent one or something, so that we can take a look at those services?
And then I think that's sort of why I mentioned, right, December?
Right.
To see what...
That would be part of RFP, right?
Right, my only, my only...
Because of negotiations afterwards.
My way of starting with that is, you know, as far as going to have to make a commitment for X number of hours out of their current, their current practice, I don't know that you're going to get a lot of interest for a six-month contract.
I don't want to get stuck into which company is not representing the county law, just because we need them for a year, and we're not into that.
You, you would have, hopefully, a favorable termination clause to come within that contract, but that is urgent caution, you know, I, I think about, you know, what they're going to have to do to take on another government agency in their own practice, you know, maybe they're out there, I could be a hundred percent wrong, but I just think of the amount of work out there, and, and for a six-month contract, I don't know.
Well, I think is that, as the manager explores options, who knows what things she's going to run into?
I think, I think we, we want to know if, continue, we would like that to be in an RFP, if it happens, it happens, if it doesn't, it doesn't, and I think also, you know, we would ask you to make sure that there's a favorable termination clause.
So, so just to go back to the process, since it's a qualifications-based process, my understanding is that all of that would happen during negotiations after we decide on the person we want to pursue, that, that it's kind of backwards from the way you think of RFPs, and this works for architects too, like, we have to choose an architect or lawyer, basically, and then negotiate, and if it falls through, it can fall through, we're not committed, if they're unreasonable.
And they can, they can deny requests, it'd be like a job offer.
That's correct, that's exactly...
This is what you want, can you fulfill this, it's up to you and the decision court, if you're on the wall.
Yeah, so, can I make a motion?
Yes.
That we direct the county manager?
We have an open motion to accept the resignation, the resignation.
No, we voted on that.
You did?
That was unanimous.
Okay, that's correct.
So it not being on the agenda?
It is on the agenda.
Any action necessary?
Is that it?
Okay, it's covered by that.
Sounds good.
I'd like to move that we direct the county manager to issue a request for qualifications for a contract attorney, and then, in negotiations, to seek a favorable termination clause for the county in case we're not satisfied.
I'll second that.
Okay, now, second by Commissioner Edward, any discussion?
No.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
I move to adjourn.
Oh, I was already watching out. We have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Edward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Billings, discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.